That he didn't get with it was one of, because there's a cold planer, a seal master tank, a skid steer with attachment.
Skid steer, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, I think if you fit those.
All right.
But there was one option on the, on the one on the lot, if we accepted it, that he wasn't able to get just one of the options.
Gotcha. I didn't, you know, there's a ton of household equipment.
Okay.
I just wondered if we bought a barber green or would we buy?
So, I couldn't find it.
It's a cap. Let's take it.
I believe so.
Yeah.
It was so funny because I was like, better say it a couple times. You know, can you say something sometimes?
They had it until June of twenty-three, so we went with the stock unit.
Okay.
The simplest solution would be retraining you to say like, attachment two to item letter.
Okay. That's the simplest way?
Yeah. Otherwise, I'd have to write some code to put page numbers in. If you, if you look at eight A.
I appreciate it.
Sure.
Stephanie is going to cover by new. We'll see what she does.
I don't know, you tell me, unless we're going to phone her on end.
It's eighty-five thousand. Christine was like, she got chairs.
I did, no, I can't blame your dad, like, coconut cream, everyone just wanted apple.
I've never had coconut cream pie.
It is based on, that's one of my favorites.
I'm raised country. My grandma's saying.
Hey, Matt, how about if you were a superhero, what would your superpower be?
That's pretty good.
That's a fun one.
I like that. That is good.
I was at another meeting, so I couldn't listen in.
I know.
That could be a very telling.
Yeah.
Answer whatever he says.
Mine would be teleporting, because I would be on vacation, and soon as I'm done here, but I'd be back for work in a minute.
That's a good one.
That is a good one. I don't know what people are thinking.
Funny how that, um, the first line about the beginning of the year. We're hoping the other deadlines would pass. Um, the absence is thin, so I wish you should have.
Is there, is there?
That's right, because my buddy, uh, he was getting supplies from the small, I totally forgot. Just my stop and I got some.
The power to grant our friend an initiative we failed until we get the legal question.
They didn't get the good stuff.
We change the review at least every ten years, so every year, the number.
All three dollars and fourteen cents.
They were three dollars and fourteen cents, that's exactly right.
The publication question that we brought back, the graphic legal, um, we can eliminate newspaper publishing, provided that if we pass a law that is specific to a property, so the best example is if we change something, so we have to mail them a copy of the ordinance in a letter explaining what the ordinance did to their person. Um, so we pass that.
That's fair.
That's fair. And in the long run, that would still be much cheaper than publishing in a paper.
Yeah.
So the rules we've posted have to be published in three places, on the full text on the website, titles on the public notice boards. And then if it affects a specific property, we have to mail that. They need twice a year.
You gotta get just right, it's a fine line, because if you're too high, you're gonna cut the knees off.
If I go, if I go too high, like, I wanna be, wanna hit the knees here, and then two.
And then in October, we have to amend what we want to craft.
The president's chair is always hired.
And it's a kind of.
I didn't know this was a public project.
I mean, I can get you a. And those are all, so I know these haven't come up much, where you, when you guys get them, these, when I put this chat into consideration. So two years ago, we left our codification company, we were having outside come to it, A, because it was not safe, and B, they were making a lot of mistakes. So when we made our new process to do it in house, our legal counsel said we should have some sort of process where it comes back to counsel to say, yes, Ben, codified this correctly. So all of these, if you were to vote no, you don't, you're not voting no that you don't want the law, so if you're voting no that I wrote something wrong and you need to correct it.
Have your insurance.
Yes.
Doesn't involve us.
And if I did write something wrong, you'll vote no, make me correct it. These aren't important.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. He's like, I'm not gonna respond.
How much do you like Rob and Kathy?
I mean, how much do I like?
I'm only gonna.
I love Rob, Kathy.
I love this.
Well, this is, I, uh, it took me a second to figure out how to, I don't know, the thing on iPad, how to do a screenshot.
I don't know how.
Um, you, I guess you hold this button, or one of those buttons, because, you know, you used to have it on my personal.
Oh, I think that's a good thing.
I have a screenshot.
What do you say?
How do you do the screenshot?
You, um, the top button, like, I haven't tried.
I don't want to make that noise.
No, you can do like, um, the top button here, or one of these buttons here.
Okay.
It's screenshot.
So that's like.
Yeah. Well, but it's weird, yeah, because it's kinda like how you roll like an iPhone.
You can draw a percentage here. Clearly.
You gotta go the same time.
Oh, my gosh.
I don't want to go through all that.
Right.
It's like my password at work, too.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Expense report, so people.
I don't know.
So you're having a hard time, any blinds that were up his age, you can just swipe them.
We're supposed to buy G I S, what'd you go on the money on?
Blind, it's annoying.
What kind of lights were they being, tweeting the paper?
Okay, that'll really blow my budget.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, they're, they're with.
We'll be spending that money on gas this year.
Ah. To make it go away.
I put the other.
So you were talking to just.
Yeah.
Too warm.
The ground is up there.
See, I should have more step open.
And just, and then I let scroll this way, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I like.
Okay. Yep.
No, like, now I know.
Forgotten.
Oh.
Yeah.
Shoot, shot it, Charles. Wait, is that snow? But she's all right. Is that what that was?
I think it's like top.
Because I just saw it as sand initially, to remind myself. Or is it, which?
That's definitely the start.
Okay.
Stand down, not that one.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's. We know it's one of the countries.
Can't. Because I'm on a line. I will be doing it. But if, oh, this has to get to a, to a roll call, don't I? Oh, is that it?
You will, yeah.
All right, I will be able to do that, and then we'll.
Did she silence her?
No.
I'll talk to you tomorrow about that.
I have nothing.
Did you get your pies?
Yes.
Are you talking to her?
Are you, are you in the meeting?
Does she hear us?
Here we all are.
How does she do it? Do she mic? Oh. I'm like yelling across the room. Okay, microphone right, all right? That works?
So technology.
Not really.
Stephanie Christina was the only one to order coconut cream pie.
I love that. I love it, too. Is it? What's your first student? We ordered them, um, Patrick and Mia, yes, and we ordered them for the chamber, and they were very excited.
That's cool.
Really? Yeah, and we kind of keep going invite, and it was really fun. It says little things.
Life's too short, eat the pie.
I mean, if we aren't about engagement, about space and employee engagement, and, uh, let's, just to gather people together, like, to do those little things where they, where it lets you know where to be profitable. Which seems obvious, because I can think about how many companies can not do that.
Well, I'm moving, I'm moving. Recognition, sure.
You could have just said yes, I never left my head.
I, I was, I don't know why.
Right, my dad, and I was like, how did it die?
Well, that's why, yeah, once, it's just some last kind of, I never got off the name, which was turned out, was it perfectly like Rose?
I didn't print the backside for you.
Yeah. That's why, yeah, I'm not used to.
Yeah, it's weird, I took mine to meeting with Ben on Friday, and I was like, what? Haven't used it since you gave it to me.
I love some of our, our councilors, and watching like, three kickoff games going on here, people playing volleyball, people park, people fishing, kids on playground. Really want those payout funds for, for doing something right.
Back over here.
Get started here.
Do you want to, or shortly?
What's that?
Do you want to wait for Terrell?
Oh, yeah.
Terrell.
Right.
I agree. It's all for the good of the community, whether or not I'm gonna shut the second door.
That can't be too, you know, Daryl's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, lock the door, turn off the light.
All right, Terry's taking us down.
Yeah, go, go. Is, do you pull in?
Yeah, but that was only two years, two minutes ago, so.
Oh, yeah, you're not waiting, are you?
Start with that. Right? Well, that's. Probably Texas.
We all stand up and clap, when you think.
That would be. Maybe you did. Or maybe you walked on the hall, is this the toilet?
Yeah, Y S C, Y S C.
Oh, okay. Yeah, let's just go. All right. And now called order, the city council meeting of Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, time is seven oh two P M. Uh, opening prayer, Jamie.
All right. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that might affect all who live and work and visit our community. And continue to remind us that all we do here tonight, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth for the services of our community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ben, would you please call the.
Member Schreit?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Vol?
Here.
Member Wyre?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member McLeaster?
Here.
Member Waren?
I'd let the record reflect that, uh, member Waren is joining us virtually. Consideration, can I have a motion and a second to approve as presented, minutes from February fourteenth?
Is that the start?
What's that? Oh, uh, twenty-eighth, March seventh, and the February twenty twenty-two finance report, in chapters one fifty-nine, seven forty-one, nine oh seven, nine fifty-three, eleven thirty-six, eleven forty-three, eleven ninety-one, and seventeen thirty-nine, as amended or established by recent legislature.
Eleven forty-one, not eleven forty-three.
Eleven forty-one, sorry.
I'll make that motion, the vote moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, at this time, we will have recognition of public, um, members, um, of the public wishing to address council may do so. Each speaker will be ran in five minutes. Please come to the podium and begin by stating your name and address for the record, as a reminder for the, as a reminder, the rules are posted on the screen. For the audience, right, and a violation of the rules, uh, is grounds for suspension for speaking privileges. Everybody wishing to address council.
Chuck Osborne, three oh seven, Fairview Street, southeast toward Kent, Ohio. When I walked in here twenty till, there was more than a quorum of council members here. And the remaining members came in shortly after that. I would like to know where my councilman is. Are virtual attendants now permitted by law? How much longer is this gonna be allowed? Can anybody answer that?
Virtual participation is permitted by law until June.
Till June.
Till June.
So she will be allowed to vote.
Excuse me?
July first, twenty twenty-two, the effect.
So she will be allowed to participate in votes?
Yes.
I don't know why Mrs. Waren can't attend when all of you are here.
Mr. Osborne? Mr. Osborne?
I'm speaking, Mrs. Waren. So, I've seen this go on for ten years. This is pathetic representation, and as you all heard back in January, she refused publicly, on the record, to come and look into a complaint that I had. This is not the kind of elected representation that I would expect from my councilman. And Mrs. Wyre joined in, refusing to come and look into a complaint. You are here to ask questions on behalf of residents, to scrutinize, criticize, and vote accordingly. But I just never, ever see it. You're just an extension of the government, relaying what government wants to do. And it's too bad you don't want to televise this so people can hear it. Your audio is horrendous, and your video is pathetic. I thank Mr. Young for putting up the video camera, rather than just leave it sitting on the shelf collecting dust. But as I said when I first came in here, to speak against the decision to stop videotaping, the minute I walked in here, it was obvious, this room, you cannot videotape, it is so small. Probably fifteen years ago, when we were going round and round about whether to transcribe minutes and, and everybody was praising the fact that we put them on audio tapes, the video, the audio. I went up to the city agreement. You'd be blown away by the quality of their council chamber, their videotaping room. They have multiple cameras to videotape the entire body, and the speakers who come to speak. So this was nothing I would, uh, run up the flag and cheer about, the way the city functions for its citizens. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address public? Okay, the floor is closed. At this time, may I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase of property for public purposes as permitted by O R C one twenty-one dash twenty-two G two.
Vote, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Ben, would you please call the.
Member McLeaster?
Yes.
Member Wyre?
Yes.
Number Waren? And next, number Waren, number Schreit?
Yes.
Number Vol?
Yes, yes.
Number Waren votes yes. Number Vol votes yes.
Yes.
Number Matheny?
Yes.
Number Orr?
Yes.
With seven four zero against motion chair.
Okay, thank you, Ben. At this time, council will enter into executive, executive session, let the record reflect, uh, council would like Mayor Walder, the Director of Administration, the Deputy Director, Director of Administration, the Director of Finance, Wayne Boyer, and Terry Moore from the city's legal council, uh, to join council in executive session. Uh, let the record further reflect that member Waren will be joining the session by phone. Uh, you are now in off the record.
Discussion, sword.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah. I'm excited.
You all there?
Chair, I do think so.
Can you guys hear me?
They're gonna call you. They're gonna call you on your phone, so.
Oh, am I hanging up right now?
Now, just put this on mute, and answer the phone.
Hey, I'm on Kurt's phone.
They're gonna call you on.
Can you send them that number?
I don't know Kurt's phone number, don't say it right now.
Done?
I don't know Kurt's phone number, don't say it right now.
Hello?
Oh, we want Kurt's phone number, bad.
Hi, Stephanie, I don't know Kurt's phone number, don't say it.
Hello? I'll give you my, this number.
Text it to me.
Just one more, is that what we need?
I don't have, okay, all right, um, get a change second.
That's what they're checking.
She goes, that's her phone, she was texting. I think all of you do. What was the outdoors?
Is it great?
It's the worst weather out here in the headshot.
I know. I I brought it back this afternoon when I came home. Let the dog out.
Now, if I can cut it all to my memory, yeah.
Not dog food, I haven't been discovered.
Should we take the hour that they're in there to take this part, roll it out into the courtyard and put that through again?
Now, if I can, if I could down.
That'd be cool.
That's the only thing that we want is to walk, walk in the same, also one of us. How do you guys read the same?
Audio would be difficult, yeah. Especially with the zoom view.
How do you keep them blind?
I'm gonna just go around closing the rest of them for your entertainment.
Yeah, are you gonna subject to?
Saying to Merrill that it is much prettier to be able to look out the window and see the part.
The City of Green, the Rockford Township, township. City of Green just magically became a city. One day walked in the doors of all the businesses and said, "You were paying in tax."
That's incredible.
They if Jackson, I think, would have tried to
Do the same thing in Southern County, didn't he?
Become cities and and their population would not wanna be city.
It's long term at work, aren't you?
Yeah, it's just that work one day, they report and they walked in and said, "By the way, good how you feel?" I heard him in Jack's voice.
Yeah, I feel like they did not have been happy about that.
Well, no. They upset a whole bunch of people. If I remember right, they jumped in right at two percent.
Yeah. Well, a whole bunch of them in Southern County did at about the same time. They all kind of a countywide push to not be annexed by Akron. So there's quite a few township-sized cities.
Right, so they they were fighting annexation. So it can swallow up by Akron.
I guess that's what Hudson did. That's how Hudson would think of it, they're, they're a whole town that's up there. Hopped together. It's working for them.
Oh, yeah, it's working for them. So they, like I said, if it's a township, it became a it magically became a city, so they don't have to pay them by.
Mass. At least we still sell the airport font. Yeah. And it's just gonna become a, a, a font size. Actually, if you look closely, different people have different font sizes in order to get their name as big as possible on their name tag. It's like John's has a bigger font size than mine, because it's a short name. So I started them all at whatever maximums I figured out. And then, you know, people had to get smaller if they had more letters. I think Marty is the smallest.
Is it Red Steffing?
I think Marty is the smallest one, it could be Martin Van Gundy four. Lot of letters. That's kind of at least make you cut a double letter and triple letter font. They could cross the board. No, if we could find a scrap. I figured she would've cut that quicker than you. She probably has to take it down to two.
Yeah.
Pulling other things up.
Yeah.
We appreciate that. Because how many works upstairs? I appreciate it.
You're fine. The thing is getting your garage sales.
What really happens is when you have your contract, you're working on the car, there's a set off a siren. That scares the Jesus out of me. 'Cause it sounds like it's like right on me.
Well, it is right on me. In an enclosed in area. Yeah, we finally got the replacement car on the road.
Yeah.
Six months later. That was a long ordeal. Working with that. No, ultimately we ended up coming back to our insurance company 'cause our insurance company wasn't going to get us full credit. So it's kind of, you don't understand. You can't berate my car. You can't be bullied for that, you know? Especially not outgoing. I've heard for two months. And then there's certain parts with the outfitting that was not transferable back over.
But not the same model of car?
Because of because of the accident after every certain items on it.
Oh, they got hit themselves.
They got hit themselves or when you insert a strobe into a housing. You can't just take that strobe out when we can insert it.
So does that mean I won't be scared anymore? At least for now?
Well, I feel next one's coming. The date for the truck is May supposedly come.
There was also another day where I had to go down to the basement. I'm walking past, I saw that the light was on and firing green. So I tried to prepare myself, but I could not prepare myself. 'Cause whoever was in it just happened to start firing as I was walking back out with the box and right next to the door.
It was a good thing with military coming here, it wouldn't stick anywhere.
I almost dropped the box over.
This is kind of like one pirate.
No, so it took the Oh, later that's it. Somebody ordered.
Somebody wanted a sweet potato.
Yeah, Gina was saying somebody ordered a sweet potato.
I felt sweet potato and it was 'cause it was majority did, but it needed more than one person, like sweet potato pie.
Apparently.
Apparently. That was one of those ones that just couldn't have been required at its port. Did it couple with the tea grounds? The peanut butter had gooey gooey.
It was actually gooey.
It had a slice, you know, small slice of peanut butter and a small slice of key lime wine. Peanut butter's good. Key lime was still partially frozen, like you let it thaw out completely. It melts quickly.
And they were jokingly offering me uh blueberries, slices of blueberries because I'm allergic to blueberries.
Okay.
So I'm like, here you go. Oh, oh, I'm so sorry.
I bet you wear a blueberry colored shirt.
That's what Jennifer said to me the other day. Looks like if you're allergic, why are you wearing a blueberry colored shirt? I I think it's blueberry juice color.
Not so much more so, what?
Poison berry. Asahi.
I like some of that went through and then back for a little while off phase. Yeah, asahi juice or whatever it was.
Really, it's just a trader's shirt 'cause it's purple, right?
It's Jackson.
Yeah.
No, it's a preference for sure. You're bright. You're not wearing blue, black, or a shade of gray. But you do you do have a shade of gray.
A white. If he's a brighter shade of pale.
I'm allergic. I'm gonna choose to take that as a compliment.
You know that lyric from the song. Sorry. Isn't that family word?
Yeah, family words are massive, they're fucking stones, but I'm not sure.
Pro call him, sorry. What? What was that?
Never.
One of their members just died recently. But it it does predict just a tiny bit.
Tiny bit, yeah.
Twelve May nineteen sixty seven.
Now you're really throwing off the abounds in your music playlists too.
Just barely doesn't predict my career.
Oh dear.
Well, some of us, we need to rerun some of our parents' music growing up.
Do you know what music records are substitute? They were going to, maybe it was more popular.
So you were were you here for a specific topic before all of this quiet happened?
No. Sure.
Were you ready for the hour-long silence?
I do enjoy the hour-long silence. I'm fit. You're curious to know all of our YouTube viewers are blocking. They're they're not waiting.
Was it again, what one? Two-hour marathon session one night?
A long
That was on Zoom.
That was on Zoom, which was better, I'm gonna say.
Yeah, I could turn T V F powder.
You could. I couldn't. So I was sitting there panicked, when are they gonna come back? When am I gonna have to press a button? Yeah, I think that's the longest one that I've been here was Sept- oh, was that September twenty one? I think about two hour long.
I don't remember. I can't remember. All I can remember was being afraid to get off and go to the bathroom.
Yeah.
Because you wouldn't know if I was gone and I could write him a chat.
Yeah, another there was another one Zoom one that Shannon was covering that had where she sent me a chat like, I'm going to the bathroom. If they come back, make them wait.
Oh, come down three.
Is it in our team or come and just take and
No.
take out the uh narrative from the sportscasters?
No.
Do you do your job for fun at home?
Home, like, you know what really helped me relax?
Doing more of my job.
Well, I used to do wine with the wine during COVID to keep my skills going. I do wine with the wine.
Interesting.
Then actually, no, when I get, I get to my mind that I can't get out, guess I do sit on my couch and work my stuff.
Oh, I yeah, I'll if we're on a big project that's stuck in my head, I like can't sleep at night 'cause I'm thinking about how to transform it.
I have to get it out of my head and get it started before.
Devalue yourself.
Or I have to value myself every day. I I I don't make an hour of age. I can't think of it that way. Yeah, you you can't. When I work, I try to live in the community I serve. Kind of fit in the service.
Must be nice.
Why ever tried to face my hours on the high burn? How do you say the top of the head? Is it? I don't know. I have apples so I can lose case.
Just like you're gonna pull out a loaf of bread and a cutting board and
I believe that does sound good enough. 'Cause my mind's with the apples and the bread and the cutting board, just like the apple butter.
Should be DoorDash. Charcouterie tray.
Right.
Teaching just about an hour.
So obviously we can take sitting here quiet for
Passive time.
How many holes are in the crystal tile?
They're shaped stinks.
Is this like cloud formation?
Next time I'll bring a scanner and a box of records from the basement and you can sit here scanning records for me.
No, I was just thinking should have had a Ucar deck in the car. It's on. Unturned in my memory.
Ucar? I guess as far as card games go, it's a little odd. Like, here's the deck, take half of it and just throw it away.
Looks up two sixes and two fours.
I keep those for scorecards.
In between your current chance, I made it for fun.
Like a game college or that's how you entertain yourself, you know?
Well, when you had time between classes and your personal practice.
Hmm.
Comparing them all, not to go drinking with everyone.
Who said he had fours?
Hoo. Maybe Kate forgot, right?
My hope doesn't matter.
My car will be towed by the time I get out of here and I'll be walking home.
Wobbitoes, that three take a sound.
Yeah.
Who am I? I was the RA in college, so I've had pseudo friends who didn't really wanna hang out with me 'cause I could get in trouble.
And that fact, I was selected. I'm on for anyone that people are making trouble.
You don't hang out with the ones who are gonna be resting soon. Let's see. Let me look at you and go through my book and figure out which revised order or notices you are breaking.
So were you rated in chess or did you play for fun?
Oh, we played for fun. People couldn't get, well, people together to play Ucar. We usually find somebody else to play chess.
I struggle to find people to play chess. Checkers, I play a lot of checkers. In the honor store.
Yeah, with I think with actually books, it's a booky strategy about chess, I just find and play.
Yeah, I could never read about how to play. I still play the game. I'm not in it for
My strategy didn't work for you, didn't it? I use the formula. I always think of that the big stomach prostate had all day before I had a migraine, back at home. Stomach prostate and that, I think that's Netflix series about chess. The down girl that was like chess prod.
Queen Gander?
Yeah. I think it's show.
Everyone sued over that check.
And did the the connection of the writer or the book?
No, it's not based on book. It's based on actual chess player's life. Loosely, um, that she's doing her, how she feels she was betrayed in accurately as a drug addict. They don't tell me. Tell you, but I wasn't up. You have a screen.
Ben, when I came up, there was a door open to the front of the building. I don't know if that was you or what.
Yeah, it was really hot over on the other side. They were trying to cool it off before the executive session started.
Okay. Gotcha. Maybe should have locked the clothes. It might hurry them up.
Smoke them out.
Yeah.
Well, mine's mine's also not a seven eighteen. The trust here is mine. At what point do we all just leave and turn the lights off? Leave a sign so he took too long. Can he go home?
How do you recover techs?
Everyone get door dashed.
Yeah.
Door dashed.
I have this very hurricane right here. If you.
Do not interrupt or do not touch. Sit up. Face the mountains. Speak swiftly.
Sometimes open rules that they always follow.
I was just about to say, perhaps a little refreshing.
Is hard to engineer a chokehold.
Yes.
I believe so. He has that luxury. Yeah, the sort of argue it's not here. Where is it, do I?
Yeah.
Essentially, yeah. Does it have any more power? So someone else will put some.
Do people keep checking in on me?
And then. Probably figured the screen was for him. Yeah, figured the screen was. Okay, camping spaces. What? Camping spaces like silver like. I mean camping space. Camping space at the backside, one with park areas. So what, rotary park? That's really the only park I think you'd wanna go camping at.
So.
Silver cat, rotary cats camping spot. Yeah, but I assume it's like off the beaten path a little bit. Oh, it's around the back, but it's on the back of their sports conference. Maybe I could put camping spaces in price park. The one maybe. Those are probably. I think they're just one couch. Nope. Little washrooms. You could put one rotary. Back where it clears out on the other side. No, there's like camped anyways without parking. Before you get to the Congress. Where did she take it without parking anyways?
Who is it?
Chuck Brad. I walked outside. All the doors are locked.
Oh, man.
Okay, after eight, see the doors are locked.
Everything locked up.
Thought it was armed rubber.
Yeah. Well, the chief ought to be happy. Anybody can pack a gun now. You see the governor signed that?
Yeah, three months, three months before it comes effective.
Right. That's real lovely.
The one thing about the permits was if you had somebody that had a permit, we didn't care because you knew that they were legally allowed to carry it.
Sure.
You knew it wasn't a felon with a gun.
Absolutely.
Now you're gonna have to treat everybody with a gun like a felon.
That's right, Ed.
Because you don't know.
Well, of course, you guys are in the blind.
Yeah, felons don't tell you that they have guns. So you just assume everybody's armed anyways. But if somebody says that, hey, I've got a permit. All right, fine, you got a permit, I don't care.
Sure.
I mean, that we didn't, that really didn't affect us that much.
It. It didn't affect you that much, even if somebody had a permit?
No. If somebody had a permit and had a firearm in their car, well, they went through, they they at least had some education and went with it.
Right.
And you really didn't worry about them doing silly stuff.
Yeah, but what about the Waco that's never pulled the trigger before? And now he's packing.
Well, yeah, you're the ones who, well, this we had before. You had the little lady who went to the chorus with a little twenty-two and then decided she wants to carry a three fifty-seven mag.
Well, that's true too.
Sure, no, it's never. And has never fired anything.
Well, I don't know what was in the blind, Brian. That's out there.
I think politics, political pressure.
Sure. Yeah, but which way? Stay in the ground.
Yeah, I'm not, hang on, I'm all for you people, but.
Sure.
So now it's every time you walk up to the car.
You got it.
Being a fence guy, but you don't have to tell me, so I have to ask you.
Oh, they make it so tough on you guys.
Again, that one's hard to tell you.
What's that?
I have no problem. Your guy keep it making.
Sure. Oh, I understand. It just seems like out there to me.
We didn't, we're gonna be pulled ducks in the mud. Turn us back on. Have to have someplace to gather standard. Stephanie, are you back?
Stephanie, you there?
Hello?
Oh, there we have it, okay.
I'm here, sorry, I can hear you. I'm sorry, I'm down.
Okay, they have a motion and a second to adjourn from executive session.
Revolt moves, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Let the reflect, record reflect that no action was taken. Moving on to no business or new business, old business, sorry. Kind of a motion and second to read by title only ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-two.
Revolt moves, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance amending Title Five Administration of the Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton in order to establish more efficient and effective and efficient zoning review and amendment processes.
All right, in your packets, you have the memo dated March fourteenth that describes the changes that we have proposed with the rewriting of Title Five. But you also have attached behind it a page that is noted as section eleven ninety-one point nine-nine or chapter one one nine-nine enforcement and penalties. The attorneys have recommended that we amend the ordinance for consideration tonight to include a final or a new section entitled eleven ninety-one point one hundred violation and penalty for source water protection. So this, we have already adopted this one in another location. We are folding this identical location into this particular ordinance, so it is in both places. I would just call your attention to the fact that as you look at this in paragraphs two and three, A two, A three, you will note that the penalties violating the ordinance are substantial. Are substantial. And I think that speaks to the significance that we attach to the source water protection legislation in this, in the zone. Are there any questions? The administration, do you have anything to weigh in on?
No.
If, if there are no questions or additional comments, then I would make a motion to amend ordinance.
I have it right here.
Seven dash twenty-two. Wait and read it, sir.
Yep, kind of a motion and a second to amend ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-two specifically chapter eleven ninety-one to include the penalty provisions previously adopted by section two of ordinance seventy dash twenty twenty-one for said chapter as shown in council's packet.
That's a thing of beauty. I will make that motion.
I will second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then can I have a motion and a second to adopt the third reading of ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-two?
As amended.
As amended.
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to ordinance eight dash twenty twenty-two, can I have a motion and a second to read by title only ordinance eight dash twenty twenty-two?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance amending chapter one forty-five planning commission of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
This ordinance eight dash twenty-two and nine dash twenty-two are curves out, carve out establishing code, planning commission, a set of rules as well as establishing the ZBA and its its set of rules as well. It's been discussed. We've had no comments to the contrary. I would move the adoption of the third and final reading of ordinance eight dash twenty-two.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's second.
Should be the third reading to that.
Yeah, I think it is the third.
Should be the third reading.
It is better.
Well, let's let's have Paul Mulligan then. I will make a motion to adopt the third reading of ordinance eight dash twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Motion and a second to read by title only ordinance nine dash twenty twenty-two.
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance amending chapter one forty-seven zoning and building standards board of appeals of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
Is there any further discussion on this? Sign now, move the adoption of third reading of ordinance nine dash twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two, can I have a motion and a second to read by title only twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance amending the boundaries of the wards of the city of North Canton pursuant to article two point oh two of the Charter of the City of North Canton and laws of the state of Ohio.
Well, this is the third reading of this. The wards are all within two percent of each other. It makes sense in doing this and we have, we've had two other readings on this and no discussion, so I make a motion.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to new business. Resolution number twenty-five twenty twenty-two, kind of a motion and a second to read by title only resolution twenty-five dash twenty twenty-two.
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And have a motion and a second to adopt, oh, sorry, go ahead, yeah.
A resolution to proceed and declaration of official intent to finance the purchase of major equipment to be purchased in twenty twenty-two with a maximum principal amount expected to be financed of five hundred thousand dollars and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Stephanie, you there?
Okay, yep, I'm here. Okay, we've got the asphalt paving equipment and then about burning truck, they were already in the budget. There really wasn't any discussion last week, so I moved to that.
I think before we do that, I would like to mention and make it on record, the reason we're doing this by emergency is the fact that the potential increases in these vehicles and as things are continually raising in price, that it is a good idea to move this through on an emergency for council to make sure that we get the prices mounted quoted before they go up again.
Right, and and last time Pat mentioned that and it wasn't even a good idea, it's not a necessity. Either we move on and get that price or we don't. So that's why we're doing it. And Pat mentioned that last time. Okay.
Revolt moves adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Revolt moves suspension of rules.
Second.
Where in second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And revolt moves adoption of the rules as suspended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to ordinance twenty-six twenty twenty-two, can I have a motion and a second to read by title only ordinance twenty-six dash twenty twenty-two?
I made that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance amending Chapter one oh-three, official standards of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton in order to adopt a new city seal.
Okay, it's really not a new city seal, we've been using it for quite some time, we were known as the Dogwood City for many years. Now it's the North Canton, the NC that you see up there. So, it's something we need to do, so I'd make a motion. I'll second it. Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to read by title only ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-two?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance repealing Chapter seven oh-one, general licensing provisions of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
All right, we probably should have read the, the next one first, but this is telling people how to apply and get the application in for this. That's about all I have on that, Ben, you? John, can you speak up? Sure. Sorry about that, is this better? My throat's kind of bad. So, this is a like, it tells the applicants how to apply for these different permits that you'll, 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 you'll hear about in the next one. So, I, I don't see a problem with this, it really needs to be done. So I would go ahead and make a motion that we go on instead of reading this. Revolt will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to ordinance twenty-nine twenty twenty-two, can I have a motion and a second to read by title only twenty, oh, sorry. Twenty-eight twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion. Revolt will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance repealing Chapter seven oh-nine, commercial amusements of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
Well, with this, this could go for amusement rides, plays, all of this stuff, they need to, you know, apply, and we have to okay those, and then it's also to eliminate the word minstrel from there, which goes back into the forties, fifties, so I, I make a motion, we accept this. Revolt will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, a motion and a second to read by title only ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-two.
I will move.
Second. Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance amending Chapter one thirty-seven, Department of Police of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, specifically Section one thirty-seven point oh-four, personnel in order to increase the authorized number of police sergeants to six.
So last weekend our committee of the whole meeting, Chief Kemp made a very good presentation on his need to adjust the sergeants, raise them from five to six, but in turn not raise the number of police officers on staff. And this is going to allow them the flexibility that they need for efficient scheduling and better protection for the residents of the North Canton. I'll make a motion, if there's no questions, I'll make a motion that we pass this.
Revolt will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to read by title only ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty-two?
Revolt will move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben?
An ordinance accepting a record plat of Monticello Phase eight located within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton.
Okay, so this is mine, this came from planning commission back in February. We discussed it last meeting, last committee of the whole, and now it's here, they've met their obligations, everything is in accordance to what everything needs, so I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on that, but it's a pretty uneasy one, so. I make a motion to move that forward.
Revolt will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to department reports. Deputy Director of Administration?
Thank you, Mr. President, I will just first start by saying, welcome a new full-time general labor employee to our Parks Department. His name is Michael Tazi, nice young man, this was a backfill position, not something new, but something definitely needed. We have high standards in all North Canton parks, and so we need someone like this, great attitude, good, good experience. And as we know, the biggest question that everybody says to me constantly is when is the Dogwood Park going to be finished? So, I'm just saying right now, mid-April is what we're shooting for, and I can't think of a concrete date yet because of weather factors and the ground being, you know, waiting till it unthaws, but here's where we are now. Last week, if you drove by, you'll see the turf is down, it's like a nice thick lush green color, and that's the ADA accessible, very nice adaptive turf. The guys started, hoped to be finished, and then that lovely snow came in on Friday, so that sent them away, and they're going to come back again this week to finish. The biggest excitement this week is the delivery of the prefabricated solid concrete restroom facility. So, I'm working, you know, with Chief Kemp on getting the oversized vehicle load permit on that, because that is going to come on two eighty-five foot trucks, a hundred and fifty thousand pounds each. It's in two sections, it's, it's four restroom facilities, it'll be offloaded by a crane and set onto the prepared pad where we already have the electrical and plumbing subbed up. So that's going to be happening on the sixteenth, so they'll have the police escort through town after they exit Portage off seventy-seven North, it's coming out of West Virginia, and so people are going to see that, it's going to look like overnight an entire facility was built. And this is, withstands all weather, all the way up to a seismic four tornado, big building. I'll just go high level on all the other stuff that has to get done, we have the concrete to finish, we have light poles and cameras, we have electrical work, the sub panel and the lighting power to the pavilion. The bioswell materials, those were those two additional bioswells, we had to account for water quality as well as water quantity, so we're working with Stark Soil and Water Conservation District on the type of materials we'll need to put in the basins. Later we'll need to get the finished coat on the parking lots, strike the parking lots, we have to finish the masonic shelter, if you looked, orchard, people keep asking, there was a panel that was defective, and that should be coming in in about two weeks, and we'll get that up there, we'll finish over there. Final inspections, we have landscaping issues that are also dependent on, you know, it's got to be warm out, can't be too cold, but then again, the soil can't be too wet, and grass seed, they don't think is optimal to get in until mid-May. Then we'll take down the temporary fence, and we will get the date, when I have it, the solid date, and then pre-plan, ribbon cutting, like all of council there, mayor, we'll have some significant groups, benefactors that were important to the project, the school, and that's what I have for now, but it's exciting, and I think I'll videotape this delivery on, of this facility with the crane, and I'll throw it up on the city Facebook page, people like that, so, that's all I have.
Nice, thank you Catherine.
Sure.
Director of Administration?
Well, I want you to know that the pickleball courts at Arrowhead are in a similar timeframe, we have to wait for the asphalt plants to open, to get the final coat, striping, sealing, the poles, the nets, the fence are on premise, they just can't be installed until this other process is done, so that should be completed mid-April as well.
Nice.
That's all.
Mayor Wilder?
Yes, thank you, nothing to report other than appreciate the work that our department heads are doing, and progress has come to fruition here as the spring weather opens up, but thank you.
Thank you. Director of Finance?
If you had any questions on the monthly finance report, I know we're only just into the year, so I won't address anything with that. I did want to update you on the interviewing of the deputy finance director position, we're in the middle of those. We are bringing someone back for a second interview tomorrow, so I'll keep you updated on the process and the progress of that. And then just a reminder for our public that the tax filing deadline is April eighteen. All forms, everything is available on RitaOhfino.com.
I think I heard some views in the background. Council Clerk, Ben?
Just going to update everyone on the Assistant Clerk of Council, we completed a final interview, then we'll be picking our final candidate shortly, and then, if you remember back at the beginning of the year, you all approved a supplemental appropriation for council technology for the seven of you. As you can see by all of you with your iPads, that has been, that rollout has been completed, and part of that was city phone numbers, which was a concern, we heard from residents that they want to be able to call you all. So those, as of this morning, are now live on the city website, that your city phone numbers are out there for the public to read. And that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to council reports, let's go with Jamie.
All right, hey, along with this technology, I want to thank Ben for all you did with getting this set up here, even despite the fact that I have a Samsung phone, I have learned how to answer calls on it, so as an Apple guy, I'll come around eventually, but thank you for your initiative and the work you put in on that, so. The only other thing I wanted to do is I just wanted to thank Patrick, and I think it went to Kathy, and also I think to Rob and possibly Marty, there was a resident who reached out with some questions around some flooding, and got a lot of work out of these people over here, I want to thank you all very much for the time you put in on that, so beyond that, I have nothing else to report.
I'm on my way to David.
I have a couple of things to go over, and maybe a little longer than I normally take, so. Mr. D'Orio and I were having a conversation, we were talking about job descriptions in certain positions, and came across the fact that we don't actually have a job description for our, our city engineer. So, I've tasked him and his team to put together that, and to make sure that the, that Mr. Graham is reviewed under that, and that he is compensated at the level that he is performing, and that it matches the job description. We're adding to his workload, we're adding the new paver that we voted on tonight, and that needs to be incorporated in that, as he's planning now more streets to pave, and just so everybody knows, I asked Ben to put together just a quick number for me. So since twenty twenty, Mr. Graham has provided the city with over eight million dollars in grant money to help towards that. He is an asset to the city, and I think it's important that we get this matched up for him. That's the first thing I wanted to cover, and Mayor Wilder allowed me to take the next one, he is also reaching out to these individuals, but I wanted to make a note, because Mrs. Al Farina had sent me an email today, that the city of North Canton has always supported their fire and EMS and their police, but specifically fire and EMS with the levy this past year that they passed, and three of our first responders were involved here this past week or so, and I want to make sure I can get to this part here and read this. Alan DeGunsman?
DeGunsman.
DeGunsman, thank you, Brandon Hinkle, and Jake Morton. They responded to, you know, nobody wants to call for fire EMS, but they responded to an incident, and it was a segment elevation, myocardial infraction. A lot of big words for somebody that's not on the medical field, but the important thing is, is response time. And normally those response times are like ninety minutes from the time they first arrive on the scene until the actual doctors and everything are involved, and our team did that in forty-seven minutes. And that is attributing to their efficiency and their effectiveness, and how well that they do their job. And I think those three gentlemen that did that is testimony to the strength and the power of our fire EMS. And I just wanted to bring that up, I know that the mayor is going to reach out to them directly, and I think it's important that we realize that the assets that we have in our people here in North Canton. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Stephanie? We can come back to Stephanie, let's go to John.
Well, Ben, thank you for the iPads and the phones and hosting those phone numbers, I've had a few phone calls, and, but thank you. Catherine, good job on the park, it looks, it's looking great, and that's all on my report tonight.
No, you can come back to me.
Okay, your turn.
Sorry, Ben was making sure I didn't speak out of turn, did I? That is fine, yeah, I totally agree, Dave, that was great that you're having those job descriptions set up. I know that it was something that Kathy's been working on really since she started here. We're lacking those job descriptions for many people, and it's definitely now a part of all the human resources, and I think it just helps us get better candidates, and it was one of the things she was working with Gina on, and making sure that the salaries are compensatory to, you know, what people were doing, and in the range that they needed to be, so that, that's great, and and just after our exec and hearing just all the great things that I've been privy to know about because of the finance position, I just want to thank the whole exec team, and Patrick, really, for making so much of this happen, and I think it's really exciting, but what we're going to see moving forward with the city and just some of the opportunities that we're going to be able to have. So, thank you to that whole team, and Kathy, I can't wait to see the park, and I know our, our city members are going to be so excited about that. Also, just in regards to being able to be remote, you know, I will find as all of you do, and I've worked my whole life full-time, so I am allowed to take vacation as all of you are, and I'm kind of thrilled that the state legislature, state legislator recognized that, and what facilities are having with COVID and different things, so that people could be remote, otherwise I wouldn't be able to be on this. So just to be able to do that, and take a little bit of time with my vacation, which was no big deal, to be a part of this important meeting, was significant, and I look at it as a step forward for our state, for our community governments, because it allows people to move forward on things, if we needed three votes today and this enabled us to move forward on a project, then that is significant, and, and I think that is forward-thinking in all priorities. So, I, I hope that, you know, I know that people have been off on different weeks, and I know that, you know, maybe you can call in, and if you can't, that's okay too, but this allows us to move in that direction. I know tomorrow I'm going to get two seats for work, and yet I'm not there, so that is a good thing, and I appreciate those that recognize that, so that's it.
Thanks for hanging on for almost two hours.
And that's pretty good, right?
That's impressive, virtually, absolutely.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that, that means a lot, thanks, Matt.
Absolutely, Darrell?
I'd like to, if I can, play upon two points that Dave mentioned. The first is that for those who are listening, Rob Graham's success with grants, eight million dollars, is the equivalent of one year's complete income tax receipts. Roughly, that is astonishing. And I think it underscores the value that he, he has in this community. It's really, really amazing when you think about it. The second is, I, before I came up tonight, I caught a TV five segment about EMS in northeast Ohio, and the challenges that committees were having funding and staffing their EMS. And I think that, as Dave indicated, we are very proud of the professionals that we have, and I think it's, for all of us around the table, I think it's important that that crew understand that we support them in their activities, and their professional efforts, because clearly in other, other places in northeast Ohio, they're struggling, and we don't want to come to that point, ever. That's my report.
All right, thank you Darrell, Christina?
I think I'd just like to say I attended a Main Street Festival meeting this morning, yeah, this afternoon, this afternoon, and Main Street Festival will be August thirteenth, but there were several city employees in attendance, Brian Hill, and Steve Shank, and Matt Morrow, and Kelly Hart, and I just, I'm going to echo what everyone else has been saying, this, this team that's in place here is incredible, and the knowledge that they have, and the history that they have, and the fact that they've stuck around, and I mean, this meeting was over in forty minutes, and that's unheard of, because we're like, yeah, bleachers, yeah, wrestling rinks, yeah, we're going to close the streets at this time, so just, these people are amazing, and I think, I'm just really proud too of the collaborations in the city, between the city and businesses, the organizations, I mean, Dogwood, how many different groups are involved and, you know, have funded and are partnering on making that park happen, and all of these things, I just feel like the city's working together, I feel like there's cohesion that I didn't see ten years ago. And all of these things, I just feel like the city's working together. I feel like there's cohesion that I didn't see 10 years ago when I came to North Canton. So it's just awesome to watch, and I'm proud to be part of it, and that's all.
Thank you, Christina. Do you want to mention the Story Walk collaboration?
I can. Yeah, so the North Canton Library will be installing a Story Walk as part of the Dogwood Park along the trail. I don't know if everyone knows what a Story Walk is, but essentially we have 12 posts that kind of have like a plexiglass cover on them, and what you do is take apart like a children's book. And so each month we'll have families or whoever wants to be able to walk and read a page. And then you walk a little further and read the next page. So we're really excited to be able to be part of that. But the library is just one of, you know, I think several partners who helped bring this all together.
Very cool. All right, thank you. My turn. Piggybacking off Rob Graham, not only his grants, but his organization and his planning are absolutely incredible, how he sees his future and, you know, is able to handle the money that we have and plan out all the streets. It's amazing. So I'm a huge fan. And he's just one of the key people in our group, like everybody keeps saying. So Patrick, thanks for Pi Day. That was fantastic.
Gina and Rob too.
And Gina and Rob, and everybody else. Buy and support local. That's it. Final call for new business. Let's look at the meeting's calendar. On March 21st, we're having a public hearing. It's 6:45 PM. March 21st, we're having a committee of the whole at 7:00 PM. March 28th, we're having a regular city council meeting. The next week would be Easter, spring break. And then on April 11th, we're having a public hearing at 6:45. Any additions to the calendar?
Is there a meeting on April 11th? Besides that, I just got cut off.
I think it probably got cut off.
Yeah, so normally I just include the next month, but we scheduled that hearing last week, so just to make sure.
Oh, gotcha.
We remembered we scheduled it, I included.
So there will be a meeting on?
Yes.
There'll be a meeting both April 4th and April 11th.
Very good.
Oh, there, okay, so April 4th, we're, okay. That's my bad. We're not taking that.
You're not?
Yeah, all right.
Unless you all vote for it right now.
No, until later. All right. Motion to adjourn?
Make moves.
Favor?
Hi.
Hi, here. Utensils, plates there.
Kathy, you want a cutter? You want this cutting? You got half of them. What's the other one?
I don't know. I only have one down here. Coconut cream and some of the French. Oh, yeah.
You're good, John. Does the city have a bourbon shooter? Yes. All right. Does it do concrete or asphalt?
Send me an email.
Send email. You know, I'm not afraid to send you an email. You know that. What you're looking at, you're putting that man together.
Something I need to be aware of.
No, I just, it was in conversation.
Don't say that. It couldn't be worse.
We'll get you a tissue. I wanted to try that. Was it the coconut cream? I've never tried that before. I've never tried coconut cream.
Had some dental work done today. I don't know if I'm, I can't turn it down that much. I'm going to have to try it.
Sorry about that. My voice comes and goes lately, so. I'm going to Florida in a week. Hopefully the pipes will be better.
Mr. Osborne, how are you? And I can't bite down all the way. I'm pretty much swallowing it whole. I gotta take little bites.
So congratulate you for eating your pie.
Oh, I had some dental work done today. They even asked the dentist, it's like, am I going to be able to speak tonight? Sure might sound funny.
Ben? Crisis number four.
It was long enough.
This is how many we bought.
Oh, my God.
They bought. And they're getting with safety first. Loaded them back in the back and transported them. Gina's. I heard that comment.
We're just going to have to taste it and see what kind they are. You're the one that says it first. We just laughed.
Like I just got recorded.
I mean, I drove by this morning. I was in, I was going like on the one, and I guess it goes back twenty ways too.
That didn't work.
And that's. Well, I'm glad it's been addressed.
I thought I stepped in front of the camera. I thought I saw. I was just going to ask.
In their mind, it can be one car and they can get. Years ago. I can remember. Like my first two was calling for something. There was a crossing. I was at the corner of Glenwood and Fair. I was driving my car. She would always yell after me, go like this, and tell me to slow down. Even though it's a street. And I tried once, my mother's telling me, 130 mile an hour speed limit. I actually went through like above the speed limit, and she waved to me as I went by. So it's all a perception that as far as, you know, what people want to see. You guys come up. Thank you so very much, Patrick. I really appreciate your help. Yeah, I'll grab the take and back up.
I'll see you tomorrow.
I will see you.
What do I do? Yes. And I noticed for the new zone, that won't change. It is, when I ran two years ago, I really concentrated. Certain radius, his computers just. And so I concentrated on other areas.
That's cool. I can bring up other shirts.
Every like three years, call says, why haven't we paved the street? And then we have to re-explain that they live on a private street.
I like that, though.
And like literally Logan's, I think I must have thought I was. This book had to weigh like three pounds. So I was sitting there dining at the table. I'm like, hey, I don't see anything with.
They found. Recreation of the district Facebook jersey, like the undershirt. Because he wears Amani, like his shit.
So how bad was the car?
Part of the garage.
Yeah, we skipped some.
Did it affect your office?
Didn't affect his garage door. It's just like one of the downs.
So we tried, we tried crack code the first time. Crack code was, crack code for the money. Not quite as convenient, but we'll find out. But they wouldn't tell you.
She knows everybody else. Oh, Sancho, okay.
What's tomorrow?
Patrick baked them all.
I never had coconut cream. It absolutely was.
I'm like soda. I know.
I understand why you guys popped the door.
Yeah.
But short north is a, well, you can call this back door then.
You're almost out of door hairs.
So you want to sit up here tonight? But you can have anything. Okay, once in a while, once in a while is fine.
Put Terry's name tag out, but then Terry's out. Put Terry's name tag out, but then Terry's out now. Show us where the door locks.
Thermal sensor? Thermal sensor. Hang in there, okay, good, uh, rest in peace. Chuck, I feel like we should let you set up out here and videos walk into the cars.